We do have an agenda with items on here with people we have particularly four and I'd like to begin from the top of this and recognize those who have to speak during this particular time. First of all is Tammy Holloway, just first listed.
Chairman Edwards, we have Chuck Stewart, who is our chief jailer. He's going to be speaking, Tammy has, her staff has the clue and that leads to, to in her office. So Chuck can present.
Okay, good, it's your book.
I'd like to thank you for hearing this. Something I've heard, I thought the magistrate from the, uh, Dr. Tammy Holloway a little while ago, they're always agreeing with, uh, they agree with the board of directors, they didn't have state going and dropping. Uh, I guess it seemed one last to give them more swag office than what they have.
Just make it in the mic, please, so everybody can hear you.
I'm looking to, uh, move into the magistrate's office, magistrate will move into the office that I'm in now. It's, uh, they have a location for me if I can give a magistrate a call. They have some of these small places they have, they have a six, eight, eight or nine or something like that. I really don't need that much space for what I do with the magistrate. I'd better get out of the space than, than I could, uh. And also they hold security with them, like, well, they're like men sometimes, like most of the magistrate's office, you have problems with that door right there, family members or victims, family members.
You're talking about that freeway right there?
Yeah. And we do like to move and we can use up back Holloway to take them out the back over to the magistrate's office. The county cuts the office, uh, takes the problems there. And the magistrate would say around eight to five office hours. So I think that would work out a lot when they come in, they just have to, they sure locked the outdoors to the left. We can call them anytime, but as far as the cost that comes, it was, I get inmates to move. And, uh, but the only cost I can see, they, they, they mentioned they put the paint in our office and things like that. The magistrate said they'd paint, I get inmates to, uh, to do paint and move. And I probably, I ain't talked to type, I would even have dropped the line in one office or two.
It's all in there, it's all in there.
And all I got, getting away.
Now, we, we had some initial conversation about this, I was concerned, uh, is the door, making sure that it's secure?
They can actually come through the jail if they, if they don't want the outer doors open, isn't that correct?
Uh, yeah.
And go straight through the jail and then go into the courthouse with all the outer doors remaining locked. If the magistrates can do that. You know, the only, uh, one question somebody had, what if magistrate goes in and locks the door, is in there with someone and somebody comes in behind him, they'll just have to lock the door. But I, I suggested going straight through the jail and not using the outer doors. That way you don't have to worry about locking the door behind you.
But still, you still have to have that door open, you have to have it open. Is that right?
Yeah, well, that one.
No closing that up?
No, the door will be open, it'll go straight down, yeah.
All right.
But I mean, they can open up the doors, that's fine. They feel kind of confident about it, Tammy did, and she spoke with magistrates, so they didn't have a problem with it.
They, they, they'd like to give it a little more room, but they were on the same desire, but they both worked off before they did.
And you said it had to be approved by somebody, you may have mentioned that?
They haven't said it had to be approved by the board.
Okay.
The board for her, just the question, state to come in and drop a big one on.
Okay, so it's there.
The lines are in that room that's right beside it, you know, where you move down from the top to the bottom. So that would really be more convenient, that would secure, that'll be a bit more too.
Mary Tommy, questions or anything?
Any suggestions, babe?
Okay, all right, sounds good, thank you, sir. All right, next is the community health assessment findings and Felician Maron. What's Felician? Hi, how are you?
Very good. This is the community health assessment, this is the main part, you won't do it.
Okay, yeah.
And then this, this smaller executive summary, left, watch this.
Yes, please.
Executive summary is awesome in there, it's a packet. Follow along with that.
Appreciate it.
Community health assessment is required by the state to be done every four years. Um, we did, the last one that we did was in 2008. The main findings of the community health assessment at that time was the, uh, to concentrate mostly for public health was to concentrate mostly on recreation, family fitness, and then of course access to healthcare. Uh, we've just completed another one for 2012. The, the change that we had at this time is now the federal government also requires hospitals through their IRS to complete a community health assessment and also set priorities. So what we decided to do, Western Carolina did, um, from the four or eight counties is we went together and formed what was called the Western Carolina Healthy Impact. And actually it went as far as Burke County that we, we joined into this. And we joined with our original hospital, whatever was our catchment area of Burke County, and to do, to do this community health assessment. And kind of made a little bit more of a broader regional approach, plus also of course a county approach. So both was done at that time. The, uh, community health assessment, uh, we partnered with Murphy Medical Center as our main partner for this. But the community health assessment was completed, they, they did phone surveys, some of you may have actually received phone surveys of about ninety questions, it was a little cumbersome, but anyway, several people actually completed that here in the county. We also gathered data for our county to do this and have found, um, from our last community health assessment, kind of give you an idea of what, what can come from this. We, we started our free clinic, was able to get grants to start the free clinic based on this community's health assessment. We were, we were able to get the playground, grants to build the playground. We were able to assist the US Forest Service in master trail plans. We assisted the Recreation Department for Grand County in a master recreation plan. Continued the school health center, or school, or their, their school that Marlon Moore, um, operates. And we also did several other, you know, small projects throughout the last three and a half years since our last community health assessment was completed before we started the other one. Of course, those are ongoing issues that we will continue most of the time. Disparities within the county continues on even though yours trying to work on them, but what our, the main goal is to try to keep them from, um, increasing and also to try to improve them at the same time. This year, the priorities that we have chosen based on the twenty-two, 2012 community health assessment are obesity, access to healthcare, tobacco-free parks and recreation facilities for the county, diabetes, and support of mental health and substance abuse programs. We have in the past chosen substance abuse and mental health as more of our priorities because we usually choose actually two in the end that we focus on mostly. The problem is that it's a little over the scope of what we can do as our main focus. So what we have chosen, like I just said, is a support component to the mental health and substance abuse programs in the county. That way we can lend that specialty to those that has more concentration in knowing how to handle that area, but be there as supportive and send that in as resources. Prevalence that seems to be, um, most, of course, there's a lot of information in the full community health assessment, but the main prevalence of diagnosis was the diagnosis of diabetes among adults in Grand County rose from eight point eight percent in 2005 to ten point one percent in 2009. This is a full ten point eight percent increase, which is a major concern. The percentage of overweight and obese in Grand County is significantly higher in all age groups than Western North Carolina and North Carolina percentages as a whole. So Grand County does show that we have higher percentages of overweight and obesity in Grand County than we do in the rest of, in the state and Western North Carolina as a whole. Um, mortality rate of heart disease exceeds the Western North Carolina rate by ten point six percent and the North Carolina rate by sixteen point three percent. Heart disease is still the number one mortality issue here in Grand County. Uh, white diabetes has went above it for the state of North Carolina. Another issue of course is still the medical professions in Grand County were still forty percent less compared to the region as how many medical physicians, that being physicians, primary care physicians and pharmacists that we have here in the county compared to the ratio of population to the county. Compared to the rest, were forty percent less in comparison to the rest of the state and the region. Which is, you know, we all realize that, that we are in shortage for, for medical providers here in our county. Of course, other issues that was shown is, is the low income population here in the county, the high unemployment rates for the county, lower education attainment. We have a very, very high, matter of fact, one of the top of the state education attainment for high school graduation, which is very detrimental to our school system, which is very great. Problem is people very seldom actually continue education after that and it drops to very low rates. Which is, with low income and low education attainment, is a risk factor for facing disparities, for health disparities within, within the populations. Our, our, our population is aging, sixty-five and older age group has increased to nineteen point seven percent of the total population for Grand County. This is compared to twelve point nine percent for the state. So we do have an older population of the mean age of forty-four point three in Grand County, or the main, mean age in the state of North Carolina is thirty-seven point four. So as you can see, we are at age population here in Grand County, which is a concern when you consider the fact that we just went over that we're short on medical providers for the county. So that, you know, that usually means trying one out in the county to guarantee medical provider. The community health assessment, like I say, is done every four years. If we do continue partnership and collaborate with the hospitals, the federal government does require that every three years. So it may be that we do start doing this every three years. At this time, we are disseminating this information out, we have given it to the Board of Health, to the Grand County Commissioners, we will be presenting it at the annual grade meeting, uh, which was supposed to be last Thursday, but will be this coming Thursday. We are also having on our county website, available the full document is. Uh, we've got it at the county library, available for anybody to review. We can make copies for anybody at any time that, that would like further review of it. And we will be putting it in documentation in the local newspaper to have that available. And if anybody has any other ways that they would like to see that it's put out to the public, we'll be more than happy to disseminate that option too. We will also be hosting a meeting with partners about strategies to improve at least two of the priority four areas. If you, of the ones that's listed here on, on the, um, second page, priorities chosen based on 2012. That first full, or first sentence there below the bullets on the second page. Those are our, our priorities chosen. At this time, we will narrow that down to two and we will be having meetings to discuss that and starting, I think, in the fe, or first of February, that we'll be having those meetings. Christine, you know exactly when that, the healthcare meetings will be? It will be around, in, in February that we will be having a healthcare meetings meeting to actually set these priorities. So if you have any discussion or any items or any input, you're welcome of course to come to the meeting. But if you don't, or are not able to come to the meeting, then you will, you know, have opportunity to email me, call me, you know, whatever you'd like to do to be able to put your input on that because this is what we want, is to be able to have input from the community and especially from the leadership of the community and, and making sure that we have the right focus in what we're going to be doing over the next three and a half and four years. One of the biggest concerns of course is the tobacco-free parks and recreation. That is a concern that we have is that it's hopefully to be able to, to approach commissioners and the possibility of at least having our parks to be smoke-free, if not tobacco-free. Um, I know going to our playground area, it's really hard on the kids when you're sitting there and, and all the adults around you are smoking and the kids are coming back and forth through that area. Or I know going to soccer games, I can remember coaching soccer games, you know, parents are, whoever standing on the sidelines cheering them on, smoking, that was not a good situation. So it is something that we would like for you to consider as we bring you more information on that and just put it for thought for now, is the possibilities of changing this to tobacco-free or smoke-free parks and recreation areas for Grand County to encourage healthier lifestyles for the children that's coming up. Another thing that we're working with through this community health assessment is, I know you've heard us, heard me mention the, the region grant, regional grant that we got for eight western counties, that is, um, Community Transformation Grant Project. But that grant is also awesome, and I think at this minute I've got more information. They have, um, we received some money this year, or this past year for some staff, but we also have received, let me pass this picture around, some items that's going to help with our farmers markets. We have two farmers markets here in Grand County at this time that is active, especially in the summertime. In that stuff right there that we received a grant, we've got, um, some cigarette butt containers, disposable bucket liners, vehicle twenty-five wheel, vehicle looms for wheels where they can keep their items stored in it during the farmers market, forty portable tables that they can use to set up for, for farmers markets or any other, you know, anything that we can say this is going to be active living, healthy living, tobacco-free living, anything like that that we can say we can use as these items for, is really good. Twenty, ten by ten candies, tote bags, where people will be able to, to, to use tote bags instead of disposable bags, we've got twelve hundred and fifty of those. For the sidewalk stands, you know, that you stand up and where people can, can, can see the farmers markets open or, or whatever. And so, you know, items like that that we did get, as you can see, they're stored right now in the emergency management trailer for, for the county, I've got to figure out how to find a place for that. We're working on an actual way to be able to sign that, that information out to people who are, you know, we don't want it to just be put out one time and it's over with. We want to be able to help people from now on, be able to, to encourage people to set up, whether it be a fruit stand or a vegetable stand at, at the convenience store or whatever, to encourage, you know, people to buy local and people to buy healthy foods and to have it available all over the county. So that's, that's some of the items we're, we're looking at on that. Um, I would like for you to consider, we have nowhere to put this stuff, um, to keep it where we'll have availability. The construction technology department over at the high school is in the process of building a storage building that's large enough to handle all this, these items. If we could get that and locate it, I mean, even if it can be located in health department, we'd be fine with that. Or somewhere strategically located where, you know, when weekends from the farmers market is available, we can have that where they can sign out this stuff and bring it back and forth. But I would like to consider having some way to have this, and you know, there's other times that we get grants for car seats or anything like that, that this building could actually be used for that. But don't have an exact price on what the construction technology, it's basically the way they build stuff, whatever their cost is, and then you, they usually they like agree to give them a hundred dollars or whatever to try to replace the wear and make it some tools and stuff like that. The estimate right now is around twenty-six hundred dollars to buy this building. They, uh, they, the, the construction technology teacher is waiting at this time to make the determination as to what siding and shingles to put on it because if we do purchase it for the county or for the health department, I want to make sure it matches. So if it comes to the health department, it would match what the siding and shingles are on the health department. So, um, that is the presentation as of now for our community health assessment and I would love to answer any questions anyone has.
Wow, a lot going on, very interesting. Uh, one thing that I would like to ask is that, this is, this is statewide?
Well, it's, it's, it's on a rotational, yeah, it's on a cycle, yeah, so everybody doesn't do it at once.
Okay, and is this whole document going to be back on?
Yes, it's on, it will be, it's on our, on the department website.
Okay, the NCACC, Northern Association of County Commissioners is working on a new project now. And what it has to do with is a, a place where they can compile data.
Right.
For all the cancers, are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Good, so you're already in contact with them then about getting all this to them?
They've, they've, they're in conjunction with the health director on all this. So they, they, or it's all part of the same group doing all this together. We use the catch system to get a lot of our data.
Okay, great, because what happens with that is it's going to be fantastic once it gets done.
It is.
So for every grand writer or anybody that wants to do any type of research, you know, I know there are sites already out there that have some of that. But the question that I've always had with them is, you know, the most recent, and you know, because we haven't waited a whole lot of time for ten years to pass before we had our data.
Right.
And, you know, I can see this as being really valuable, and I know it is with you.
It is.
When you go to start looking for grants for Grand County. And some of this is, uh, is concerning, some of the numbers, it really, really is.
It is.
I was having a conversation, matter of fact, with somebody the other evening coming back from, uh, asking, you know, what would the Department of Health do about medical care? And I see everything that you're doing and you're feeling a great big gap, and I don't think you can do it all. And what can we do with nine thousand people without having a facility of our own? I hope to see that he'll talk to expand, you know, you said issues of, of going to a nonprofit status. I go by, I think it's everywhere, I've got a Pearson blossoming everywhere. And, uh, so I'm, I'm completely aware of it, but still, you know, it seems like, you know, the instances of the basic health, and it surprises me a lot, heart disease versus the cancer. Uh, so that's, that's news to me, so it's a good work, I, I thank you. Anybody have a comment, anyone else?
I probably talked too fast.
No?
I did talk fast.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate you very much.
I want just one more, can we take a look at that building over at the school?
I'm sorry?
The building that is being showed?
Yes, he, that building is located at the very back of the school, there's a little church in front of it and the building behind it, I don't know if it's locked or not, it wasn't the day that we, Chuck and I went over and looked at it. Um, it's got a loft area in it and then below it it's open also for storage.
How, how big is it?
I think it's ten by twelve, twelve by fourteen, I'm not exactly sure.
You said it was, they were thinking around twenty-six hundred dollars?
He's, he's got, he's going to have to call around twenty-five hundred each right now. The Harding plant siding might add another couple hundred dollars, so that may be the difference, but at least, I mean, it is the thick OSB for it.
Right.
It's built on runners where it can be moved around.
Okay. What do you think of the finished?
It's got finished inside, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, interrupt, when will it be finished, you have an idea?
As long as it doesn't snow and they can stay in school, probably within the next month, month and a half. We will have to paint it, but I'll, I'll take care of that. That will be an extra, we've got probably three or four gallons of paint in both colors of our building left from when we built the building, so that'll, we'll do it all, but not close.
All right, anyone else? Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, next on our list is, have to do a tax re-bout. We're having some discussion about this about in-house contract, and I have a question. Barbara, please?
Yes, sir. Go right there.
Yeah, well, you know, I've, I've looked at this, looked at this, and one of the things that I did do, I remember was, you know, the, it's posted on there, and I just took a look about the re-evaluation periods, you know, of counties, and I know there's a hundred different counties in the state, and pretty much it's an individual county decision about when to do a re-eval. Majority of them go with the eight years, really surprised me, surprised me no in, I mean, go for every year, uh, every eight years. And then some, you know, with, some are four, there are nineteen counties that go four. And I looked at this and then from the standpoint of it being established on a list from a, a resolution, the most up-to-date resolution in July of 2012. And according to that, we're slated for 2015, and I've been trying to understand where that came from.
The reason 2015 is to get it out of the election year. And since the market has started, really started falling in 2011 and 12, that the values have really come down, that it needs to be where they're a fair market made. Of course, when the values go down, the majority goes up.
Right. And that, that's something that we're looking at, but one of the things that we did have some discussion about and about the re-bout, I, myself, is, is, you know, whether to do it in-house or by contract. And you sent a list, and I don't have that list made, but at least there's some contractors.
What I've got is Pearson Appraisal, Tyler Technologies and Tax Assessment Solutions. And Ron McCarthy that does, has done the businesses in, in the last two rebounds, he is dissolving his company and he is with Tyler Technologies. So he knows the downs inside and out on the values of the in-house approach.
And as I understand it, you, you will do a, a re-bout and you have to start about a year and a half?
Two years.
Two years?
Right now, we, they need to be in the field right now.
Figure that work done.
Because the first year, what you do is they'll have like two or three people out into the field going, uh, we're just doing a drive-by, they do not have to do it, we'll walk around because the 2010 RC and I done the walk arounds. And.
I met you, isn't it, but, I didn't meet you.
You did.
It was my fault, I remember. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, when, my question was about doing it in-house.
Uh, in 2011, I came before the board that if you got rid of the employee that we had, that, because I talked with the state, with Michael Brown, and he said there's no way two people can do it. And with that employee gone, that put us out of doing it in-house for a reason.
And the, the contract prices were how much?
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for Pearson and, uh.
Two hundred thousand for Tyler Technology?
Two hundred thousand for Tyler and, uh, I want to make sure I told you right there.
Pearson, I think it was.
Pearson was a hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty thousand, that's right.
Yeah, Tax Assessment Solutions was two hundred and twenty-five and Tyler Technologies was two hundred. But with Ron McCarthy being, and it is up to the camp, they don't have to go with the low bid. But Tyler Technologies will do the better job, I feel. Because they do, they will have Ron McCarthy as far as, he has done the scheduled values before for the county in the last two, three rounds, and also, uh, evaluation of the data.
McCarthy?
Yes.
And he's with it?
He's with Tyler Technologies, I think.
All right, another question, I, I don't want to be down and talk to you, but I have, I have to understand. You don't want to be down there, well, not yet, but, one of the things is, is the schedule of values. I know that you have tried and tried explaining to me, and I've looked at it, but my, my concern that I'd like to see, particularly for this board, is it important, so I'm getting another re-bout done, is having a better understanding about that schedule of values. About how, how, excuse me, how it's developed and that the board, because this board stands as being the, uh, it has to be the review board, I mean, we are, we are a de-organization review board as well.
A year and a half from now, the board will have to adopt the schedule of values.
Okay, but what I want to say is, from my standpoint, one of five here, is that I want to have that at times to understand.
Sure.
Because I've had to sit in front of citizens of Grand County and not really understood some of the things that went on with the schedule of values. I didn't, I didn't understand, I didn't know how it works. And I'm not going to sit here in front of God and everybody and say I didn't, because I did it.
What it is, is just a pricing book.
Right, but I, but you, I want to see it before I have to go to work.
Well, it has to be before the board.
Right.
And then it lays open for thirty days.
Okay.
So then the board will adopt the schedule of values. And we usually try to do this in like July, August, because it's pretty well said in what the budget's going to do.
Right.
So.
See, that was my question, how, how is the schedule of values determined?
By the price per acre that it's selling for and the price per square foot of what building houses are going out for.
Price per acre that land is currently selling for?
Yes.
Has sold for heavy comps?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
You can have down to one, if that's the comp. You can have down to one, if that's the comp for your area. Like three D appraisal in Andrews, they go outside the camp. We have to use the comps for inside the camp.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, is that home too for building as well?
Yes, ma'am. And what we do is, uh, like in the last one, the, uh, America's Home Place, and what's the other contract I can't remember? But we called them the secret turnkey house, price per square foot it would cost for an average, say fifteen hundred foot house. And that's what they, the prices that they give us on this, price per square foot. And they were lower than the local carpenters. Cause we even go to all the carpenters to ask, you know, what are they charging?
So we took the lowest.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's seventy-two dollars square foot.
Okay, is there a difference made for rental property?
With rental property, you can do the income approach on those properties?
Is that done? I mean, that's what we have.
Yes.
And there's another one, and I don't remember what it was. It's probably not on the grid, but, uh, yeah, there's another one that's involved with that. But my, my primary concern, you know, is in that we're shooting for fifteen, is that I, I'm sure that the board members would like to have that schedule of values and understanding of that. How flexible is it then of saying, well, can you give an explanation as to why this is not going to ever lock in Grand County, but look at it and say, well, this is established on, this is established off, this is computerized, got planned on? Because when it comes to E and R?
You know that much?
I need an understanding. And I didn't.
What we're doing with this, when you do a re-evaluation, you take all sales, and you've got the lows and highs, and then you take the median of what it's really selling for, the average of, usually you'll have a low and a high out there. But most of them are pretty well in range. Debbie, would you go sell an acre, you're willing for thirty-four hundred dollars an acre?
I'm over that wood, I'm over that deer.
You're dead, old, poor, or...
But see, the real good land was selling for like twelve thousand, fourteen thousand dollars an acre. But when you've got just like overall of how much, like a ten acre tract, you've got good and you've got bad in there, and really what was the price per acre for the whole tract? And that's what you never look at.
One, one thing, when the rebound's done, all over Grand County, there's land that people own to the ground, I'll get, get a hold of it, it's a lot. In price, I think it's high. That land is very, very little back, and it's, it's a tax burden on the people, having to pay tax on it for the rest of their life, which on you?
Well, the land, you know, like up on top of the bridges, or we go through, you know, people building on, on the law, and then they've got the river down next to the creek. Nobody's charged them pre-front prices unless it was in a subdivision or on the creek by itself. But when you've got, you know, back then, pre-front prices were forty thousand dollars an acre, up to where this piece of property on top that was nothing but a rock bar might be worth five hundred dollars a acre. You have to look at a whole tract, a similar tract that is selling, what price per acre is that whole tract going for? Right now, we're looking at two thousand dollars a acre.
What you run into there, all over Grand County, they know property lines running the top of the ridge, rest of the branch.
Yep.
I've dealt with it a lot now. When that property line goes down the center of the ridge, you on the height of the ridge, it's a pin point, and you've got a flood running all through, if you flat land, you ain't got nothing. And if it's flat, the flood plain got you, still ain't got nothing, so we're decent.
Well, that's why we have to take similar properties that are selling. What did that whole tract that did sell, all of those tracts that did sell, what were they selling for? With the good and the bad? And that's how you average it out.
And I think one of the problems that we had, like in, in the last year, we had, there were so few sales. So there, you, you don't, it's hard to get a, a true median or a true, um...
Median or what? Well, see, that's just like since the two thousand and ten rebound or Thunderbird, you know, agreed to three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a lot, we just had one just sold this past week for a hundred and ninety, they had won. That's how the prices are dropping. But I do recommend Tyler Technologies. And it's Florida.
Another, another one, and I know you're a Florida person, but there's one, so... I know that in Grand County, we, we have citizens of Grand County, and, and I'm thankful, you know, folks who want to choose Grand County for retirement. Uh, they come here to live full-time the rest of their lives, and then some have seasonal homes that are here. But typically, you know, I want those who live in Grand County, that if I want to go and sell a piece of property, I'm gonna put a price tag on it, so I can get as many dollars as it can. And what happens is that there are people who have the ways and means to spend a lot more money on an acre of property than the citizens of Grand County do. And yet, it's the same citizens of Grand County that are paying the taxes. So with the formula that you're talking about, you know what's coming. You know, here it is, they went and paid twenty thousand dollars per acre for that piece that only holds the world together. And then here I am, I've got a whole backyard full of it. So whatever that sold at, you go to the formula that you did it all out there, then it inflates everything. And my, what I want to know is, what is the magic light box that you can shove that through?
We can't.
You can't, but you see, there's the fair market value issue. And, and then what happens is, they say, well, why, why is mine so high? And then you say, well, you know, we had the comps here, we had sales, and, uh, that, what we've not even, you know, say was worth ten thousand dollars, so I'm not gonna buy it for it. And I'm not making it up, it's happened. And it's gonna continue to happen. As long as there's land, like there is...
Well, that's just like you're talking about the flood plain?
Yes.
Thirty thousand dollars an acre for sixteen acres? I mean, how do you justify? Years ago, I even asked the state, and I said, if we don't do the pricing between locals and, not locals, because it's, it's killing the local people. And they said, no, you have to take all qualified sales. And I have to sit down and say a report. Everything that sold in that quarter that's qualified, I have to say it's obvious, because that, then that goes into the utilities.
Right.
On how much they pay, because we have to stay it up here for sale and ratio everything.
Right. That's why, that was the next thing I was thinking about, that has to do with Becky trying to explain that to you, about the issue of ratios that are important, uh, for the camp.
Well, if our ratio is sitting at fifty percent, and the utilities value is, say, twenty million, then they only pay taxes on ten. So that's not fair for the taxpayers of the county, because they're not getting that kind of rate, paying half of their pay.
Right. So you see, that's the whole thing. When somebody comes and sits before the E and R, or somebody has a question, it's coming before the board's officials, and you have, it's hard to explain all the issues of ratio and the issues of, we have to take the comps, the sale prices, that, the other. And, um, so that, that's, that's clarified for me. But it's had, it's helped me to hear about, you know, one more employee making the difference. And you recommend Tyler?
Tyler Technology.
Tyler Che?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, the board, I've had my say, are there, um, anyone else? Give you up. All right, Wendy, you need rest, Melissa?
See, I'm already in my two years.
Right.
I went through a rebound that wasn't starting for a year and a half, and we've got short.
I got you, I just...
We, we need the people out of the field now.
And I just had a question, because in budget, you know, we allocated seventy-five thousand on rebound for this fiscal year, and when we transfer that over, that's gonna leave you at a hundred and eighty-six.
Pretty short, though.
Yeah. But I was gonna say, is there any other hidden costs that, because this will be my first rebound.
Yeah.
Yeah, I came in right after the, or right as that other one was finishing up, but will there be any other hidden costs that we'll need to budget for in this coming fiscal year? Or you think if we, if we be at the two hundred and some odd thousand, we'd be okay?
I would push to put any of that due.
Yeah.
And any of that place, going for all of it.
Well, I know, I think in your budget request, you asked for like a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty thousand, and, and we can only do seventy-five.
Yeah.
So if we could break that into another, I'm just trying to get in my mind when we get to budget, if we break that to another seventy-five, then I'll recover it.
Yeah. Well, by two thousand and fifteen.
Right. Because we'll have it deals.
All right, thank you, Emma, that's all I have.
Go right there.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next person on the, uh, agenda is Mr. Perry, Levy or Levy? Levy?
Levy.
Levy, sorry. Welcome.
All right, I'm here today, I'm on the, uh, member of the board for travel tourism, and, uh, we have a very small budget, and about forty percent of our budget is going towards labor, to employees. And I've done a little research, and I see we've been at three percent for twenty-seven years, and, uh, the state allows up to six percent.
So you're talking about occupancy tax, so can you just clarify?
Which wouldn't affect a local, locals at all, at all, paid by, uh, facilitators and visitors. Be nice if we could implement something like that, that way we could expand on our advertising, you know, farther than, uh, three hours away. Anybody within three hours of state troopers, they're just coming here, not really spending any money, but any money other than, you know, eating a meal here, and then they're gone. But we need, uh, the additional monies to expand our advertising, we'll jump farther for vacationers, companies, and, and there's also, you know, for what I call the day troopers, that are three hours or less away, that's going home at night, we're mainly a one percent meal tax, which is in five counties right now in North Carolina. It's in, uh, let's see, it's in Wake County, Dare County, uh, let's see, which one's Raleigh County?
Okay, it's Wake, it's probably showing Mecklenburg or Mecklenburg County.
Right, Mecklenburg County, they had it. And, uh, that would help us with the day troopers. You know, you just come here, you're out horseback riding, or you're motorcycling, they, they go back home. Uh, I don't know what it takes to put this policy in place, but that's why I'm standing here, to see if we can do this.
Well, I, I heard that your name was on the, the agenda, and I'm trying to do a little bit of homework on it, and, uh, I went through and I passed some information off to, to the commissioner of war, too. It has to do with, uh, sales and use tax. There's a technical bulletin, it's eleven pages long.
Right.
Just on food. And then it's whether that food is involved, or it's sliced, or it's candy, or it's, I mean, it's really, yeah.
Right now...
But you know what? There's a way. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but it's complicated to me. And you're right, I'm sitting here right now, where I'm at, as commissioner for this county, and I'm not sure exactly if it has to be able to issue a referendum on that one percent.
Well, there's, there's twenty-seven restaurants in Grand County that I can, that I can think of.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, if you stop, one percent, which on a ten dollar meal is just an extra dime, you know, which if you're out on the ballot, dime's not gonna kill you.
I understand.
But it helps travel tourism a lot.
Okay. Becky, can you contribute anything to that down the way? But it's understandable, we can't, cannot do along with Donna, if there's a legal procedure in, in addressing, or at least researching.
Yeah, I was telling Mr. Levy that I'm trying to get, get researched. I, I, I know we're authorized to go up to do six percent, you know, the occupancy. I think we probably just need to connect the school government on that, just to make sure, you know, if there's something we have to do. The food tax, we probably may need to get some legislative action on that, I'm not quite sure. Uh, I told him I'd be happy to do the research on that. I mean, we would just need, if that's the case, we would need to contact the Department of West, and get something put on the agenda for next, so just wait and see.
And, and too, we'd have to have input from the folks with the businesses.
Yeah, the one issue with the three percent right now versus the six percent is the fact that I think Montana's trying to get in the three percent tax, and they just can't, so I don't know how we can impact that, because if the maximum... Right, if the maximum is six, it's previously upstate, and then three percent places, we can, and a very three percent in the best, so we have to turn that shit a little back a little bit.
I've, I've been told that the town is looking at occupancy taxes, what?
County's already maxed out, they're at three percent, county three percent, so they kind of didn't fly this more.
I'm, I'm talking about the town of Robbinsville, it's exploring the auctions of an occupancy tax. So if you, you start adding, you know, everything together, then, you know, you could be up to nine percent.
Nine six, nine six by law.
Yes. So I, but I don't know if, if they're compounded or...
Well, they can do is, with the legislature, they can do is, they can do a special law for Grand County that could run in, where it would allow, if, you know, if, you know, get your best, and they could probably change this, and they could allow this, this county to make.
On a county larger than, uh, six percent, that's sharp, Mecklenburg County, they have a two, two percent gas comp tax.
Oh.
They're up there.
Boy, I wish you could get with the best, you know, if we move on.
Yeah, probably.
Boy.
That's all right. That's great. Well, thank you very much for approaching the issue, and we'll, we'll do what we can to study it out, and find out, I guess, probably be the, the bridge, so let's know what's going on with travel tourism. Appreciate it, nice meeting you, sir. All right, we have approximately, uh, ten minutes, and I noticed that the, the school board representatives were here from Grand Bay School.
We had one sign that...
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, let's see, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't have that on my head.
He called in afterwards, John...
Oh, yeah. There you go.
Kirahaga update.
Okay. Welcome. How you guys doing today? Are you the chamber guy today? Not today, not today. All right. Yeah, today, today's good. Welcome.
Uh, what I want to address is the, uh, plans light up on the Cherokee Highway, how it's coming, and, uh, what we can do about it for the, that's one of the main tour fare back and forth going here in Tennessee, not only just the Grand County, red trucks, also the main tours. And what we can do about the impact of the run, uh, because Grand County's, one of the situations that the biggest, you know, we had is the tourism.
Right.
With that road being closed, it's, uh, directly affecting, uh, the tax, everything else that's going on here in the county. Uh, I just got a little memo from, uh, James Budd, and, uh, Joe Sutscher, out of, uh, Silver Boom, he, uh, he got with, uh, the state D O T, and the, uh, federal, uh, road authority, so they're hoping, uh, to do a carpenter, uh, temporary repair, might be done for, uh, Sweetwater, uh, recently, yeah. They're supposed to be starting on it all, uh, to get it put together, but what I'd like to find out is how long it's gonna be until you get the road permanently fixed? Do you have any idea on that? And, uh, how long it's gonna take to get it done permanently, so we don't have to detour? We've got some most dangerous roads around here, for the state. And with, uh, four forty-one being closed, uh, getting back and forth through Tennessee, uh, for just locals, and for the, uh, tourists, that's gonna put a hard impact on the county. So with the Sheriff Able being in a situation, so I'd kind of like to find out how long it's gonna be to get it back up and running, we're safe, and not have to detour. We talked with, uh, there was a smoking hot hose that were at Franklin, they've, uh, We talked with, uh, was it Slough Mountain Post, they were at Franklin, they've, uh, been helping us, trying to get some information on it, they've talked with Representative West, who's got in contact with, uh, Tom Tillis, which he's our speaker, to see what kind of actions we can get together with the, uh, Federal Highway Association and the DOT. We can get some information with those guys, through the, uh, pictures, so we can get, uh, it's gonna be easy together, some kind of order of the plan, just, uh, how long it's gonna be to, you know, take care of, obviously, if we can make that work.
All right.
Yeah, it is vital, you know, and, and having those, having these open for folks are good for Grand County. We have a pretty, a pretty big working relationship with John Sutter, Division Fourteen, out of Silver, so we're sure we're talking to him. And two, I know the next meeting on Southwest Commission, I sit on the, I'm chair of the RPO, Rural Planning Organization, to the Southwestern, uh, Southwest Commission, we're not scheduled to meet till, till, uh, March, but you know, that could be stepped up, too. And then I know immediately we're gonna be in competition with the two hundred fifty missing on four forty-one. I'll tell you that right now from the Federal Highway's standpoint. And Larry Henry, I had a conversation with him today, we're gonna be meeting some folks at the state level, like tomorrow morning, early, uh, with regard to the, the, the Grand County's result, the past storms. And, uh, we hope, and I can't make any promises about that, it's gonna be an educational event for me, uh, but, uh, we'll find out what, where we stand as for getting that assistance where we might be on the list. So that's sure, the board's gonna do this, and, and I don't think it would be a way, uh, a way for us to have resolution, as a board. I just requested Division Fourteen to state the, uh, you know, premises of driving, it's been very, very important for Grand County, that, that it's a risk, and I'm sure that it is.
That it's not a lifeline for the county.
That it be balanced up on priority. So I really appreciate you bringing that out this afternoon, and that's sure, we can bring it to them, have you resolutions on?
If you get a meeting or something together with any of the rest of you, uh, change the form, we're, we're staying on top of the, 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 the rest of the businesses, because the tourist season's coming up pretty quick.
Absolutely.
So you can get done.
Okay, very appreciated.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it, folks did, I guess Mr. Manager, you'd be addressing that, I'm probably by iPhone somewhere.
So thank, uh, it's yours, I, I think it's our work, it's, uh, yesterday.
Is that right?
At, uh, the rant, you, they either went up and looked at her, took a quick, or stood to, okay, in forever.
So there might be a contract out already? Do you know anything about that, Larry? Many contracts have been left?
I just heard from here, so that they are going to move another road around that, and they were just, the contract's been out, I don't know if it's been there or not.
Okay, yeah, I didn't have to say no. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, folks, try to get, to Grand County schools in there, we've got three minutes, then we'll do you justice. So, uh, we'll go to the comment period during recessions, or the, or, here. Are you okay? Comment period during recessions? We don't have the time right now, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, I appreciate everybody's input, uh, we'll go ahead and take a very, very short recess, we start right at five o'clock. As I understand, Commissioner Williams is ill, uh, we had someone to live with, he's actually in a wheelchair, and, uh, he's not feeling well, so I guess this will be the board for tonight. Thank you all. Very short.